All right, well, welcome to everybody and we are about to enter into our work session for Tuesday, September 1st. This is the City of Iowa City City Council meeting. And the first item we're going to be discussing is going to be the fiscal year 2020 budget decisions, which is a part of IP3. And again, if anybody is watching on various avenues, we're in our work session today at 5:00 PM and then we'll be back at 7:00 PM for our formal meeting. So I'm going to have the discussion for the fiscal 2022 budget discussion to start, I'm going to start that discussion with our city manager Jeff Ruin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an annual work session we do this time of year. It's always sneaks up on us pretty quick. But even though you just approved your fiscal year 21 budget in March, we're already working on the fiscal year 22 budget right now. That is a budget that you will first see in December and first discuss in January before you're asked to adopt it for next year. So this time of year, while we're still compiling the budgets, it's always nice to identify any major new initiatives that we need to be looking at as staff as we compile that budget. It's always a lot more difficult for us to make large scale changes in January and February than it is this fall as we are putting those budgets together from our various departments. So what we assume is that our budget needs to be guided by your adopted master plans, your adopted resolutions, certainly your strategic plan. And as we compile our budget and prioritize submissions from our department, we use those as guiding documents. So we really don't need to get into the areas that are encompassed by those various plans, resolutions, and your strategic plan. However, if there is anything new that you want staff to investigate, it would be good to get that on the table tonight, if not tonight, shortly thereafter. So this is really a chance for us to, as staff, to listen, to answer questions. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mayor, and see if there's anything that the council would like to offer tonight.
I just want to talk about since, oh, Mayor, you want to say something?
Oh, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, talk about affordable housing. Because, you know, since on the master plan, our strategic plan, we had that we're going, we said we want to create a plan for affordable housing. So we want to be like more serious about it and creating something that really going to solve some of the crisis of affordable housing. I really, because this budget is like, if we come up later with this, with the money, if we approve this budget as it is without like sinking ways of funding the affordable housing, that means we have to wait after we approve this. I don't know what you think, Jeff. Is there is a way we can find some funding for affordable housing if we come up with a like strong plan, solid plan for that? Or can we bond for it? Or what do you think?
Sure. The plan that you intend to pursue was included in your Black Lives Matter resolution. So with the funding allocation that you provided, along with that resolution, there's certainly ample dollars to pursue a plan if you need outside funding to help you get there. In terms of incorporating new monies into the budget, there's always prioritization of resources and ultimately that's your call. Our intention without any guidance from you would be to continue to provide a million dollars in general fund assistance for our affordable housing efforts. As you know, that's certainly not all encompassing of all our affordable housing efforts because we use state and federal resources to accomplish some of those objectives as well. And later this month, you'll get an annual report from staff that provides you a comprehensive view of how we're using affordable housing dollars. But this is a good time if you want to allocate more dollars towards affordable housing. It would be helpful to know the magnitude, the scope of what you're looking to invest. And then as staff, we would do our best certainly to get you as close to that goal as we can. And we'd have to outline for you what some of those cuts may need to be or reductions in service may need to be depending on how large of an increase you want to seek.
I mean, I'm really happy that you brought that up, Ms. Here, because I think that now in alignment with some, a lot of the other things that we're working on, including the Black Lives Matter and what we set forth in our strategic plan would be a really good time for a small group to sit down and try and outline a serious way forward on this to, you know, to take what the city has done before, but look at maybe other ways of converting existing housing or stock or whatever the possibilities are. But this, anyway, I'm glad you brought it up now.
I really want to like to hear from as a council because this is, we're going to create soon the committee for affordable housing. And housing is not going to come just like that. We need money for it. And if there is a way, if we can work with our staff right now to figure out ways, I think will be great. I really want to see what you guys think.
For me personally, I was hoping to actually go through some of the, some of our 17 points to just to kind of see where we are along the way and then make some tentative plans for creating those more committees or more meeting, whatever we need to do to move forward. So I believe that we do need to look at that big plan for affordable housing, which we've been wanting to do and been talking about. And I think that conversation does need to be had because we're still at the starting point with housing. And so we need to move forward with that.
I think our, the last time our staff, our city staff did an admirable job of putting together that 15-point affordable housing plan. And a lot of good things came out of that, including that South District duplex plan. So I think they are an excellent resource. I mean, that's the neighborhood and development services. That's part of their job to look for resources for affordable housing options, as well as we've got excellent resources out there. We have the Affordable Housing Coalition, for heaven's sake. Sarah Behrens, she's probably on the line now. She's always there for us. She's always got a lot of ideas. She knows what's out there and what needs to be done, as well as Chrissy over at the Shelter House knows what's needed. So I think we've got a lot of those resources that we need to utilize, as well as having, forming our own committee.
One thing I would add is with the, you know, the 15 points that Pauline just mentioned, as I recall, we never, we never completed the 15th point. I believe it had to do with rezoning, you know, ways in which our zoning ordinance could be revised, tweaked, what have you, to, to improve the affordability both infill as well as new development. And that seemed to be a pretty strong point, you know, that could potentially allow for considerably more cost efficient housing should we revise our codes to allow for that higher level of affordability.
That item is still in progress. We have, we have made some good headway with that. We've received great input from the Home Builders Association and the Affordable Homes Coalition. And we just need to spin that up and get that going. So that definitely is in progress. And one of the things I want to emphasize with our current plan is just because we were able to check, you know, those 14 boxes or whatever the number was, doesn't mean that, you know, nothing else is happening. A lot of those items were just, were kicking off new programs. And those programs are, you know, forever in motion until we change direction. So hopefully you'll see that. And I think, I don't know the exact date it'll come out in the information packet, but I know that Tracy and Erica and staff are working hard on an annual report. And that'll be very comprehensive and show you exactly where we have invested those affordable housing dollars. And I think that would be a good launching point into a council work session on, okay, this is what we've done. And here's perhaps where we need to go in terms of elevating the resources needed. So we'll definitely be prepared to get you started with that conversation.
I think for me, you know, as we look at this budget for '22, given COVID, given, you know, the concerns that we've heard from staff about potential reductions in property taxes. We know that our hotel motel taxes has been basically non-existent here, non-existent for six months. We know our road use tax has been way down. I'm really reluctant to look at this point in terms of increasing any specific spending. I think we've been, you know, been really fortunate to be able to get the affordable housing up to the million dollars. I'm certainly comfortable keeping it there. I think staff is kind of, has that pretty well line itemed. And I think once we get that report and have maybe more specific ideas, then that might give us, you know, maybe more detail as to where we can have a really, you know, big impact on some of this more affordable, how do I want to say it, affordable housing that's not costing us as much, you know, because whether it's, you know, reusing, reutilizing older housing that we know is cheaper to do than building new and trying to get the biggest bang for our buck. And at that point, if we feel like there's some specific projects that really are worthwhile in terms of elevating or getting more money, leveraging more money, I guess is the term I want, then I'm certainly open to adding to that pot. But until then, I guess, I'm really not comfortable with adding any specific big dollar amounts or projects to this budget yet.
Well, I'll introduce, I think I had three items that I wanted to bring up. I brought them up before. I think I'm kind of, in some ways, looking at them with slightly different eyes insofar as we've been going through COVID-19 and Black Lives Matter, because I think they play a factor in these three. But I'll run through them. The first is addressing the equity gaps in the park facilities that were identified in the park master plan for park facilities. That was a plan that we developed in September or adopted in September of 2017. So it's almost been three years. And that plan identified three locations, east, the east edge of the West District and portions of the West Central and Central Districts as defined in that plan. So I do think we're almost three years past when the plan was adopted. With the emphasis on Black Lives Matter, I think it's important that we take an opportunity to address those inequities. And then what I found with COVID-19, where we were, in fact, still are in some respects sheltering in place, the need for readily accessible park facilities really was emphasized over the last several months for me and I know for our neighbors. And so we haven't seen the last of the COVIDs, I'm afraid. I think they will be back. And in any event, I think it's important to strengthen our neighborhoods so that we do have them well distributed across Iowa City. So that's one. The second would be restoring our urban tree canopy. We, roughly a year or so ago, I think it must have been the last budget cycle, we were talking about, and Project Green was a part of this conversation, planting 10,000 trees, both on public and private property, as I recall. Part of that was, I think, a response to Emerald Ash War, which I think we lost roughly 3,000 trees to Emerald Ash War. Since then, we had a derecho pass through and lost another thousand or so trees. I've been hearing from a number of people that are really both concerned with what the state of our urban forest and really view it as an opportunity for community engagement and achieving something that will be a very strong positive action to take as a city and as a community. There's been lots of discussion that I've been hearing in hopes to truly use an urban forestry replanting as an opportunity for the community to volunteer in that experience, that it wouldn't be reliant strictly on staff. As Susan mentioned, you know, funding is going to be an issue. So how can we leverage the community, so to speak, and help with the planting? I was just talking with Janice earlier today. I think we might find interest among our students to participate in such a program. And I think volunteering on a tree planting, I think we can accomplish that social distancing while doing it. So it's something we can move forward on. In a group, it could be a group volunteer effort while still maintaining a safe distance. So that would be number two. And the third has to do with issues of traffic safety. You know, you know how interested I am in that. But the new wrinkle there for me was in discussions over Black Lives Matter. And realizing that, as we know, our streets in some areas are conducive to speeds higher than our speed limits. That results in a situation where, you know, you have such a high degree of speeding that it's really the discretion of the police officer as to how to enforce those speeds. So with that discretion, as we have seen, we often see disproportionate contact with our black residents. So through aligning, better alignment of our traffic, actual speeds with the, what we want the speeds to be through road diets and other measures, and by dropping the speeds, we will take away some of that discretion because it will no longer be necessary. The traffic will be moving at the appropriate speed. So I'm hoping we can utilize, and this may not be a high cost measure, because in many cases with road diets, as we've seen, we're not moving necessarily moving curb alignments. We're just simply reallocating the right of way. So I do think we would not only improve traffic safety, advance our, you know, enhance mobility for walking and bicycling. It would also have a social equity aspect to it. So that's the third item that I would like to put before you.
I'll just respond to the, I'm sorry, Mayor. The affordable housing question, I think that, yeah, we need to absolutely look at that in the context of our current focus on our 17-point resolution. When I looked at the memo asking for additional thoughts on guidance for budgeting, I reviewed the strategic plan goals that we set forth just so recently and I'm still totally on board with those. And when I think about maybe some tweaks that have happened since we approved that, the conversation about affordable housing certainly has come more into focus and the idea of having the plan. So I think some acknowledgement of elevating that and recognition to, you know, what we've done with our 17-point resolution since the adoption of our strategic plan for the coming years makes a lot of sense to me. And I think that having a, getting that work session conversation from staff on the current state of things and sort of the, not just where all the funds are allocated currently, but also that the last item of the 15-point plan and where we are with that and directions we might go. So I think that's great. And more generally, my only other comment was just to, you know, when we look at the goals from our strategic plan, and I know Jeff said, let's just focus on new things. But for myself, just, you know, making sure that the social justice and racial equity continue to be in the forefront in our budget process for the coming year.
Okay, just the last thing that I want to say on this affordable housing. So I know that maybe we're going to have a work session about it. But I really, I'm not a like budget experience, like the staff, of course. But just like by looking at the budget and seeing that sometime we borrow money to do some project. I'm just going to ask Jeff if we can do the same thing and using the affordable housing money, half of it, of course, because I know that 50% of the million will go to the housing trust fund. I understand that. But there is another, like 50% with the, like, land banking money or any other money that we allocated for affordable housing. If we can borrow money and use that money to pay for that, that could be an option. I don't know, but sometimes I just like look at it and see that. But I think you can come up with, the staff can come with a creative, you know, solution for this or creative ideas that we can use to find some fund for affordable housing. I'm really looking forward to have a work session, just specifically for that. And also just encouraging the staff to come us with ideas because you guys have the experience on these things. And if we, you can, you can find out like some creative solution.
Yes, the short answer is yes, you can bond for affordable housing projects. And if that's desired by the council, you'll just need to consider, you know, where you want to position the city in terms of the amount of debt that we carry. So do you want to reduce bonding for other items or do you want to bond additional dollars? And if so, you may have to raise your debt service tax levy. But we can walk you through those scenarios and talk to you about the limitations that might accompany a bond for affordable housing. One of the, one of the big points of the plan that we presented a few years ago was to make sure that the funding for affordable housing was kind of permanently inserted into the budget. And I think we've gotten to that point absent major financial crisis where we feel really good that we have these stable funds in there. But you all know that one of the other things we've been working on is identifying other funding sources for affordable housing as well. So, you know, an example of that is the Tax Increment Financing Project we did on the Foster Road Extension. A lot of the increment that has developed from the senior housing project that was completed up there and any future development that comes from that area in the next 10 years, that will spin off additional dollars for affordable housing that can be added to the million dollars and invested in the community. Similar, we have the Fee and Lure provisions in our Riverfront Crossings District, too. Those are monies that we have collected and we can put to use. So just keep in mind that there are other revenue sources that are slowly developing as these things take a little bit of time to accumulate. But those revenue sources will be, will be increasing over time. And we can look at new ones as well, whether that's bonding or utility taxes or any number of alternative revenues that could be available for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be looking forward to that opportunity, that council will have to get that report and hear from staff. All right. Any other thoughts for budget items that people want to put out there?
Can you talk to us about the budget for policing?
Well, well, part of the reason that your resolution has a preliminary plan date of December 15th is so that we can try to anticipate any changes you want to make to the police budget. We, you know, until we get really moving forward on that restructuring plan, there is no, there is no direction in place to significantly alter that police department budget. I could tell you, we have some ideas and you see one of those on your agenda tonight for some new civilian positions in the, in the police department. And we'd like to get to the point where we can present those to you. But I certainly want to allow you and the community to have some more conversation and for some more ideas to be shared about ways in which the city can respond, either inside of the department with different approaches or investments we can make outside of the department that would also assist our officers in some way.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Jeff, I have a question for you related to, are there, oftentimes, who know that departments have been kind of asking for things, either staff or programs that may not have been funded? Is there anything that you or, and I would actually extend this to any of the city staff that are here, putting you on the spot, but is there anything that you can think of that council should be thinking about for consideration that can, of course, it would be something significant potentially?
Well, yeah, I'll jump in. I think one of the major, with Councilor Mims mentioned earlier, we're entering a period of uncertainty with our finances with COVID. We don't know how quickly we're going to reemerge financially from the COVID crisis. We've had to cut significant dollars already out of this year's current budget to manage through the COVID crisis. We don't know how quickly that'll reemerge. And then we also have the last few years of the property tax reform, which we're, which we are anticipating to be the most significant in terms of the financial impact to the city. So one, we're operating in a context where we have a strain on our resources. In addition, we're not going to see our tax base grow like we've seen in the last five to seven years. You get, you get the building permit reports once a month in your information packets. And you can see, if you were to look and compare those to previous years, the development activity this year is quite suppressed compared to past years. We're probably going to end up at a valuation of permits that we haven't seen in 10 or more years. That's how kind of low it's going to be. And so you have to anticipate what that impact is. And it's not, it's not an immediate impact, but two or three years from now, when those taxes come on, they're going to be a lot lower and we're going to be more constrained. So we just have to keep that in mind. But to your specific question, Mayor, I think the biggest challenge that we're going to find is with the transit study. And you're going to be looking at that on October 6th. That's our plan at your work session, is to present to you the recommendations from that transit study. And right now, we're operating in an environment where our ridership is down 60 to 70%. And that has a significant impact on our revenue. And I think the community has high expectations for what we're going to be able to do with transit. And we never anticipated finishing up this report with ridership down this low. And even if, even if COVID is behind us in 2021, we don't know if that ridership will return. People are finding other ways to move about. They may not be comfortable with public transit because of the COVID experience. And so we have to really be careful with how we're projecting transit revenue going forward. We were also really banking on the idea that we could use parking funds to help supplement transit and really move some excess parking funds into the transit fund to bolster those services. And as you know, parking has been the hardest hit area of operations that we have with COVID. So our two biggest funding support sources that we're going to support our transit investment are down. And there's some tough decisions coming, coming up ahead on how we're going to fund Sunday service, how we're going to fund expanded night and weekend service, if that's what we want to do. And that could require an investment from other sources that we weren't anticipating, whether that's general fund, again, utility taxes, sales taxes, things like that, that we really weren't banking on for that idea. So Mayor, that's probably the biggest item that gives me concern heading into this budget prep is how are we going to meet those community expectations with those two revenue sources currently just being clobbered by? revenue sources currently just being clobbered by this COVID pandemic.
I do know that has been a challenge, of course, for the city resources. Hotel motel taxes down that we get. As far as the transit study and some of the hopes that council, I don't know if, I'm speaking for everybody. But one of the hopes that I think we had was for there to be some type of submission for zero fare as an option. What what would that entail? And it sounds like, of course, that, do you still think we'll get that as an option and what will be presented?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have kind of a menu of of options that that can be pursued. At the time, I'm going a little bit off memory here, but I think moving to zero option is, or I'm sorry, zero fare option was somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five to two million dollars. That's the revenue loss that we would have to replace to do that. And again, we were kind of going to lean on parking to hopefully be a big, be a big part of that solution. And so I don't know right now where we're going to, where we could find two million dollars, for example, to go fare free. I think that's going to probably take. I'm not sure, I don't even know what that would take right now, you know, the the type of funding source that we would need for that is is probably your local option sales tax. And that's, of course, a tough decision for for council to contemplate during a, you know, during a time where where folks are struggling so much. So Mayor, yes, it'll be an option. We'll we'll present you with those numbers. We'll kind of walk you through how we might get there. But making decisions this fall and even this winter on on transit is going to be very difficult because we won't know what that ridership rebound is. And we certainly won't know what the parking rebound is. So we'll navigate those discussions the best we can, but they're definitely going to be tricky.
Yeah, I'm personally looking forward to that because I do know that there's still need out there and the community has really come out, I think, strongly and and talked about their need for Sunday service and evening service, late night service. The Harrison Street parking ramp, or when we spent some of that money, some of those reserves, could that have gone towards transit?
No, not, not the, not those reserves, that those could not have been dedicated towards transit. What we were contemplating initially with the, with the parking fund would be a increase in meter and permit fees and using that increase in those fees to generate operational dollars to to pay for that. Because one of the things, one of the things you have to consider, and this would apply to our general fund reserves, if you know that we need two million for fare free and you just took two million from our reserves, well, that buys you one year of fare free. And now you got to figure out, how are you going to pay for year two fare free? And if you keep taking from reserves, eventually that bank account runs dry. So we really look to to make sure that we have sustainable funds for an initiative like that. Unless the intention of council is really to do a pilot program where the community knows there's an expiration date, you really need to find operational dollars. And that's why an increase in permits would still be there year after year. Or an increase in meter fees would still be there year after, year after year. Whereas reserves, you know, eventually would would dry up. So that's, that's what makes that that a little bit more difficult.
Thank you. Any other budget items? All right, hearing none. Well, I think we'll move on to COVID nineteen updates. We are certainly seeing some increases in our community. I wonder if, is there anyone that wanted to say anything about COVID nineteen?
I had one comment on that and it's, it's again, related to traffic that, you know, we, I believe, had in place change to our traffic stop policy, kind of taking a soft approach to to lower the, the number of stops due to, due to COVID. And as I understand it, I think we've, we've lifted that to some degree. I would, I would suggest, if we haven't already, to go back to a more restricted policy with respect to the stops and only, only enforce what we felt was really critical for public safety issues. So that we do sort of avoid, you know, the unnecessary, the unessential stops.
If I, I might provide some context for other councillors or the public that may be listening. When, when the COVID pandemic really hit us in in mid-March, we pulled back on not just traffic enforcement, but a lot of enforcement activities to to try to make sure that we limited officer contact with the public, keep our department healthy, keep the public healthy, and really just focus in on those urgent public safety matters. We have not returned to pre-COVID enforcement, but certainly as we saw more and more people coming downtown and enjoying nightlife, we felt it was really needed, particularly around OWI enforcement. And so we have started looking for, you know, enforcement opportunities, you know, if we see, you know, if we see issues related to that, but really focusing in on that drunk and impaired driving, that's where, that's where that focus is. Any stop we make, we we should feel that there's a pressing, you know, a public safety issue. So while we're not necessarily running radar like we would have been in a normal year, we still are identifying reckless driving and things like that and making stops as as needed. We're just not doing the proactive, again, running radar type of enforcement that that we normally would.
I'd actually just like to speak to the severity. Iowa has the worst COVID outbreak in the nation right now, basically the third worst in the world if we were a country all by ourselves. And Iowa City and Ames are are leading the pack, which is not a place where any of us wanted to be. The, I know that the faculty senate was meeting this afternoon to give recommendations to University President Harold. I'm hoping that all levels of government are really going to work together really swiftly on whatever we need to. But I wanted to give you a little perspective of what, sort of basically what we're doing right now with the numbers that have been coming out of of positive cases, we're looking somewhat, they're all lagging indicators, we're looking in the rearview mirror. And there's a, there's sort of a, there are the weeks of COVID. And the rule of weeks goes that if you're infected today, within, within a week, if you're going to have symptoms, you'll have symptoms. It's two weeks, it's basically two weeks of infection that you'll end up in hospital if you're going to end up in hospital. A week after that, if you have to be transferred to the ICU and a week after that, and ends up with mortality. So we have no idea right now what the burden is going to be on our healthcare facilities. And it's really incumbent on everyone in this city and everyone in Johnson County to continue using face coverings to do their, to do social distancing, distancing to stay home if you can, to sanitize, to do whatever you can. Because whether we realize it or not, the measures we've taken to date are actually, are actually, if we hadn't taken the measures, the situation would be even worse than it is. So the, this is, I would like to see personally, the university go all online like now. And we're also going to have many, many students stay here regardless of what the university does. So they're all part of our community. We need to work together and everyone needs to take care of everyone else.
I did want to mention the governor's order in relationship to the six counties that were closed. That there were some bar and restaurant closures. And so that happened on the September twentieth. Johnson County was a part of that closure. And so I, I'm going to try to find, because the, the S, the Alcohol and Beverage Division, as well as the Department of Inspections and Appeals are a part of the, the, I guess what you would call it, the, to ensure enforcement or to assist with compliance even during the day. And so I actually had a conversation with them on Monday, on Monday. And the alcoholic and beverage division does have some ways that they've been engaging with people in the community when there is an incident that they notice. They're trying to be non punitive, of course, where they're trying to engage in conversation to ensure that people understand what it means to operate under the current guidance of the governor. And so I would encourage any of the businesses out there that are still operating to reach out to the website of the Alcohol and Beverage, Alcohol and Beverages Division, because they do have some great resources. There are some questions and answers where people can go and just ask some questions or or find some answers to how they can effectively operate during COVID. So that is abd.iowa.gov/coronavirus slash COVID hyphen nineteen. So if they reach out through that website, they'll be able to get some information. And again, I know that is a challenge in our community to have to have some closures within our community and even stopping the sale of alcohol at ten PM. I know that for a lot of businesses, that that's a huge part of their revenue. And so we know there, there are people that are challenged by that. And in some entities, they can't open at all because their entire operation is after ten PM. So my heart goes out especially to our local businesses that are having some challenges there. But just wanted to make mention of the, the closing of the bars, which ultimately the hope is safety and to get the numbers down in our community.
I echo what you just, Mayor. It, I, I, I too am sorry that it came to that. And of course, it was the governor's plan to to shut down those bars and just in those six counties, which noticeably it was college towns, university towns. And and that that's sad because it will affect our economy. But I think that stresses to people, please, please, avoid large crowds. Don't, since the bars are closed, don't, don't have the large gatherings, the large parties. And if you do, at least maintain social distance and and wear masks. It is serious. This is getting very serious. When our numbers, at first, when we did the mask mandate, thank you for that a while back, Mayor, we were in maybe ten to twelve to fourteen new cases a day, but then we started rising seventy, eighty, ninety, hundreds. That's, that's scary. This is very serious. People need to pay attention and and follow some guidelines.
All right. Well, we're going to move on if no one else has any more comments. And we're going to continue our discussion on our resolution with Black Lives Matter movement and systemic racism. And so we'll, we'll have at it. I, and and maybe if we can, one thing that I do hope today is to bring up IP four, which actually has the resolution itself as, and kind of the matrix of where we are. I think it could be helpful if we can look at that during this discussion. And so I would have to rely on Kelly or someone from the IT team to bring that up. I should have pre-prepared you. But that was going to happen from IP four.
I'm sorry, if I could, while she's trying to do that, one of the, actually, one of the first items on there is developing our preliminary plan to restructure the Iowa City Police Department. And one of the things we've talked, excuse me, talked about a few times is the need for public input. And we, you know, we talked about scheduling some dates and I think we've, we've just been busy, we've kind of worked around this or kind of glossed it over as we've, you know, kind of been busy and moving from meeting to meeting. So I looked at the calendar today and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to get this out to everybody ahead of time, but what, and I can send it into Kelly later so she can get it out to everybody. But I'll just throw out six dates that I came up with that I thought maybe we could get on the calendar in the next six weeks or so. And then everybody could kind of let Kelly know which one or ones might work for them. So I'll just run through them real quickly and then, like I say, I'll send them to Kelly so she can get them out to everybody. And but if you know right away, you see issues. In order to actually have some time to to announce these, I, first one I put out was Wednesday, September sixteenth, potentially at Mercer. Then going to Tuesday, September twenty-second, doing a Zoom meeting. Saturday, September twenty-sixth at Pheasant Ridge at ten AM. The evening ones, I was suggesting five thirty was just my idea. Tuesday, the twenty-ninth at Weatherby. Monday, October fifth, either at Robert A. Lee Recreation Center or out in the Chauncey Park, depending, you know, maybe on weather. And Thursday, October eighth, again, a Zoom meeting. So, I mean, if you see any problems with those right away, I'm glad to hear it. Or if, once you actually get it in writing, if you see any conflicts that with major, you know, events in the community that I've overlooked, then maybe let Kelly know that and we can make some adjustments. I, I've tried to kind of go east and west side on a couple of these as well as Zoom meetings. Pheasant Ridge is really kind of the only one on the west side. If you think there's another good location, I, and I, I put one downtown. I don't know for sure if that's the best place, depending on who we're trying to get and everything. But I'm certainly open for any ideas and suggestions. I just was concerned that time kept going by and we weren't getting anything on the calendar. So I wanted to at least throw out a tentative schedule with locations for feedback so we can get started with this.
Are you really thinking about like physical meeting?
I am. And that's why I was looking like at Mercer. If the weather's okay, we could do it outside and be physically distanced. If not, if the weather's not good, potentially if the gym would be available and still be able to do physical distancing. That's why I was also looking at Robert A. Lee or the Chauncey. I, but that's also why I've included a couple of Zoom, suggesting a couple of Zoom ones. So if people aren't comfortable coming in person and socially distancing with masks and face coverings, that they could do a Zoom one. So to give people different opportunities depending on what they're comfortable with. And I, and I'm certainly open to suggestion. I just wanted to at least get something on the table because we've been talking about this for quite a while and December is going to be a year before we know it and we need to get some public input. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I certainly know the need to really engage people in our community. One of the questions that I would have is what, what do we need to do in preparation? I know that we have, we're waiting for the military grade equipment inventory review report. Some transparent and accessible ice, you know, budget details. I'm not sure if that's, you know, if that's all what we want to have ready before we do that, the question would be, will that be ready? But I am, I mean, I think it'd be what you proposed as far as like, timing wise, I think it's, it could be potentially a good time. I just want I just wonder what is it that we want to have out there? Or is it a really just listening to the community and hearing input from the community about?
Mayor, I think that's a really good question. And my suggestion on that, I know Laura and Janice and I have talked a little bit about this, is I think we need to, and I think, you know, everybody could kind of send in ideas. I think to go to a meeting like this and simply ask people, how do you think we should restructure the police department? Is, is a really big question and one that I think is going to be really, really difficult for people to necessarily give constructive input to if they don't really understand, you know, a lot about policing and how it works. So I would think that if we could come up with a list of potential ideas for people to react to and at least to be a starting point in their conversations. For example, John has proposed, and he did this on our, our Zoom meeting last week with a couple of members of IFR, the whole idea of, you know, being able to reduce interactions in the traffic stops by using cameras. Now, I'm probably the only one that was on council when we actually had a assigned, not a petition, I can't remember the word, but anyways, from the public to ban the use of cameras. So we'll have some heavy lifting to do if we're going to do that. But to start with some ideas like that, you know, would you rather see cameras used for, you know, running red lights or things like that, rather than have police doing those stops? What do you think about hiring mental health professionals or maybe expanding the, I am sorry tonight, and my mind is going blank here in my terminology, mobile crisis? You know, expanding agencies like mobile crisis who can respond alongside police officers, et cetera? I think any ideas that we can come up with to kind of put on a list and give to people to kind of start that conversation would be really helpful because I think otherwise people are sitting there like, what do you mean? We just don't want them to be racist and we don't want them to be biased and we don't want them to target people and we don't want them to be violent. And I mean, so I think starting that conversation with some ideas would be helpful.
I think that's an excellent idea, Susan. I mean, we could even do it the same, similar to how the Climate Action Commission originally did it with the little stickies and the priorities. You know, people could like itemize which ones from one to six, what, what they feel are the most important and where we should really start. And back to John's idea about the traffic cameras, and I appreciate your historical perspective. But I think the climate's kind of different now. And I think John has stressed all along that, that those cameras don't see color. And so that, that's kind of the important thing on that as far as to stress that, that it wouldn't necessarily be stopping a person of color. The, the light wouldn't see, all it sees is the, or the camera wouldn't see, all it sees is the license plate. It doesn't see the driver or the color of the driver. So I think stressing that point might help sell the cameras.
One, one thing I will say is I've been amazed at some of the conversations I've been engaged with in, in terms of reimagining the police. There are various people out there that have some background on what community policing could look like or just certain aspects of policing. So we might be highly surprised at the information that we get in this type of, in this type of a setting.
I think two work sessions ago, maybe we had some really good ideas about the kind of information we might want to have available also. So even I would say maybe before we are presenting or concurrent with presenting ideas, just the, the current state of affairs, like the current statistics. And as we have different areas of town where we hope to be talking with people, having available that data. I think Jeff had indicated that that would be definitely doable to, to have there in terms of, you know, what are the kinds of interactions that occur with police in this neighborhood? So that we can maybe help identify those areas for improvement that would be specific to different parts of town. And then also having available for us the current state of policies, where, you know, we've done, I, I think we've done a really good job of making more transparent on the website, what current policies are, but just also, you know, sort of preparing ourselves as we're going into these meetings with what the current policies are and the, the really immediate changes that we've made and the changes that are underway. So we can be talking contextually with what we've, what we already kind of know is happening and then have this big, more open conversation about what can happen.
One thing I would encourage, and I, I agree with the counselor Mims in that as you, as you hear people talk about reimagining the police department, a lot of the same themes come through and, and people may state them different ways. But it's a lot of, how, how is a community, do we want to address homelessness? How do we want to address mental health? How do we want to address addiction services or youth services? If, if you have themes around, if you decide to have themes around your listening post, I just really encourage you to, to bring in some of your, your locals, social service providers, nonprofit providers that have that expertise and almost treat it as a, as a roundtable discussion where, where not only the community can provide input, but they can hear from those providers and they can maybe even learn about some of the efforts that are, that are underway. I, I don't think there's very many people in their, in their community that know about the Mobile Crisis Unit and what that does here. It would be very beneficial, I think, to, to bring in the staff that works on that 365 days a year and, and talk to them about what it is and how they see that type of service expanding and, and how they collaborate with law enforcement and how they could enhance collaborations with law enforcement going forward to ensure the best outcomes for folks. I think you'll have a lot more productive conversations that way in these listening posts. And I, and I think it'll go a long way towards community education as well.
All right. Any other thoughts on that?
Do you, would you like us to go ahead and, and work with council offline to get the dates that Susan mentioned scheduled with, with each of you and, and find various council members to look at, you know, look at those dates? Is that something we should follow up on?
I guess my question would be is how many counselors? And maybe Eleanor can chime in on this. Are we going to be limited to how many counselors can be present?
I would assume three. Yeah.
Okay. Yes, three.
Okay, all right. I don't know if there was any way that we could be present and listening or, but we can go with three.
Well, you, you could actually, you know, it's the old Pat White stump rule that we refer to, meaning if you go and you sit and you don't say anything or participate at all, then you can have more than three. That's hard to, that's hard to do when the conversation is about something that is so within your purview.
Eleanor, does that still hold true if it's posted as a Zoom meeting? And, and that's the agenda on the Zoom meeting? But that's still hold true that we couldn't all be on that Zoom?
Well, I think, I think the same rules apply. I mean, if, if you're on the Zoom meeting and you're being like a tree stump, sure. If you're on the Zoom meeting and you're participating in the conversation, no.
But, but the problem, Eleanor, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, if there's four of us there, all four of us have to act like a tree stump, correct? We can't have three participating and one act like a stump, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so in that case, I would strongly urge that we do not go over three because I think it's really important that we are there as council members actively engaging with the community. I think they're going to be very frustrated if they have four of us there and we say, oh, well, sorry, there's four of us, we can't talk to you. If I were a community member, I would not be happy.
I think there are going to be enough meetings. I think there are going to be enough meetings that, that find, that, that, that it's, that three will be just plenty as we spread ourselves out.
I wonder if, since we're all together right now, if we wouldn't take maybe the next three minutes or less to look at our calendars and try to assign who's going to be where preliminarily. We have Wednesday, the 16th, Tuesday, the 22nd, Saturday, the 27th, Monday, the 29th, correct me if I'm wrong. And then October 5th, I don't know what day of the week that is.
I think it's a Monday. What was the first one?
September 16th, Wednesday.
Laura, do you want to do that with me?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think we have. It, I think we have the opportunity of people, some people doing it three times or, or twice if we want three people, or are people thinking just two individuals?
I mean, I think if three people want to be there and everybody gets, you know, at least two to three opportunities to do it, then I say the more the merrier. So we can all get as much input as possible.
Okay.
Janice, would you be able to do the Saturday, the 26th at Pheasant Ridge? Since that's kind of in our neck of the woods, our neighborhood, would you be able to do that? And I would do it with you.
Um, sure.
What day of the week? I mean, which, which date?
The Saturday, the 26th at Pheasant Ridge. I think you, you said two times, Susan, yes, I think you said a 10 or a 5:30. Which, which one was for that, Susan?
I, I guess I was thinking 10 o'clock on the Saturday and 5:30 for the ones during the week was just my suggestion.
Sounds good.
Does somebody else want to join on the 26th?
I can certainly join.
And Laura, do you want to do the South District?
Yeah, I'd like to do the Weatherby one also.
The Weatherby?
Yeah, Weatherby, the 29th.
Oh, is the Weatherby, is the 29th? I saw the Weatherby is the one, the first one.
I think the first one is Mercer, which I'm also interested in.
Okay, I can, yeah, okay.
Folks, just to remind, Weatherby is under construction right now. And I don't know if by the 29th, the trail project will also be under construction. It's a big park and there's probably ample opportunities to sit. But just to let you know that you might deal with some construction traffic while you're there.
Were you going to do the 29th also with Laura?
Yeah, I can do that, no problem.
And I, I can jump on there at Weatherby.
Yes, okay.
So it seems that we have.
How about the Tuesday, September 22nd Zoom? I would also volunteer to do that.
I'll do that with you, Janice.
I can do that one, too.
I can do Monday, the 5th.
I can do that one, too.
Where's that at, Susan?
It's either Robert A. Lee or the Chauncey Park. So we need to kind of get that figured out.
I could do that, too, this Pauline.
So Laura and Pauline and myself.
Okay.
One, one thought came to mind. I don't know if we can do some special efforts to get some of the youth involved. To come out.
Well, if we can do one at the Dream Center.
That's a possibility.
That's an excellent idea.
It's a really good idea.
We can also advertise the USG for students in the area that would like to come and post that through our social media channels and so on, if that would help.
Awesome, thank you. So.
We don't have anybody. Yeah, do we?
No one on the 8th?
I can do the 8th.
I guess one of the Zoom meeting, do you have two Zoom meetings, Susan?
Yeah, I did one on the 22nd and then the one on the 8th.
I guess one meeting can be at the Dream Center.
Pardon?
I said one of the Zoom meeting can be at the Dream Center, maybe?
I don't care.
So maybe.
If the eighth were, I didn't, I'm not up for any of the, the ones that, out in the field. So yeah, if we, if we made the eighth on the Dream Center, I could, I could do that.
Okay, great.
So you want to make the eighth at the Dream Center and just have one Zoom meeting is what I'm hearing then?
Is it possible that we, because I, maybe for Fred, if the eighth, maybe we can use both of the Zoom meetings as an option for him? But we, is early enough. If, if there's a challenge, I think Kelly can try to reach out to whoever to make some changes.
Definitely.
So then at the Dream Center, we have John. I would certainly be happy to go.
And I can be there, too.
Okay. All right, so Kelly, I hope you're helping us out by recording everything.
Yes, you want to recap?
Please.
So on September 16th, I have Burgess and Salee. September 22nd, I have Weiner, Mims and Thomas. September 26th, I have Taylor, Weiner and Teague. September 29th, I have Burgess, Salee and Teague. October 5th, I have Mims, Burgess and Taylor. And October 8th, I have Thomas, Teague and Salee.
I'd like to. Janice, you and I would both add our names to the 16th. Go ahead, that's fine.
And I think I'm on four different ones. Is that correct? One, two?
Three.
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 Okay. All right. So if anyone feels like they're missing out on an opportunity and they want to go somewhere, just let me know. I would be willing to, to share, share the love, but I'm also happy to go.
I'm really glad to see that everybody's got at least two. Some people have three and we actually have three counselors signed up for every single one of them. And I think that's absolutely fantastic. And we have different combinations of counselors together. And I think that's really important, too. And the, the only final thing that I would just strongly suggest is if something comes up and at the last minute, somebody can't make it, please try and reach out to the rest of council so that somebody else can try and sub in if they want to, so that everybody can, you know, take full advantage of getting the input from the public, so.
Full disclosure, I haven't looked at my calendar for any of these dates. So I might be rearranging a little bit, but we'll, we'll, we'll navigate through it. All right. So, well, I want to thank you, Councilor Mims, for that proposal. I think that, that is a, certainly a step forward in, in the efforts that we're doing as a community. And so. Kelly, is it possible that you can pull up our progress summary?
Can I just add one real quick thing there? And that would just me, I think staff kind of understands some of the information that we would like to have prior to going into these meetings. So if, if they can maybe let us know what that is. And then I would encourage all of council members, I, I don't know, probably Kelly, if you're the point person, maybe to get her a list of ideas or suggestions that we might want in a list that we would be able to take out with us. Again, I think trying to start a conversation with simply, how, how do you see reimagining the police department is a tough one? And me, I think Kelly, either between Kelly and Jeff and the mayor or somebody, we need to be thinking about who do we want? I, because I believe Jeff asked, suggested a really good thing of asking some of the nonprofit providers. So that needs to be coordinated. So that needs to be coordinated as well. So if staff, can we dump that on staff to help coordinate maybe some of the nonprofit providers to be with us?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's very doable. And what we might do is focus in on a key, one key issue per event. And, and it doesn't mean that, that, that entire event has to be dedicated to say addiction issues or, or services, I should say. But that could be the focus. And then there can be an open portion of the event, too. And we just make sure that we have some, some field experts at, at each one. So I'll work with the clerk's office and we'll, we'll try to do that. If there is any specific location that you want a theme to, just reach out to, to me or to Kelly and, and we'll work on that. Otherwise, we'll, you know, we'll assume when you're at Dream Center, for example, we'll focus maybe on some youth issues and invite youth providers and, and so forth.
Thank you, Jeff.
I, I know that one thing that Mayor Protim and I had talked about was just that having one item per event. And so I think that plays right into the thought process of how to be most productive. I do wonder, just with some of the suggestions that will be given by the community, will there be staff or someone present that kind of just take that information gathering?
Yeah, we, we, we can have somebody present to do that. We have also created, it's, it's up on our website now, and, and online submission form. I believe it's, I know it's on the Black Lives Matter website where you can find the status report, but I believe it's also on the police webpage, too. So we'll, we'll make sure that you have directions on how to get, you know, how, how to allow people to submit electronically in addition to whatever we might take in the in-person events.
All right, thank you. So I, I think we're going to go through this list a little bit. Now, there might be some things that are going to be on our agenda coming up. So those will just kind of defer until then. So the next one would be receiver report of Iowa City Police Involvement and the gas and flashbang devices. So that's going to be coming up on our next event or at seven PM. And so we're that's on our formal agenda. So we're going to talk about that then. So we're defer that. For the Accountability Authority of the CPRB, is there? I, I know that we've seen, and I've read the, some minutes from the CPRB. But is there any update formally on any movement with them finding either a, a private lawyer that they chose or anything of that nature, at least from my perspective? And that's what I'm interested.
My understanding is they, is, and they could change, they could have changed at a subsequent meeting, or they could change, is that they were probably going to retain their current attorney and use him for that. But I did want to point out that on, speaking of fora, which we were just organizing, they are doing their community, their community forum on September twenty first at five thirty PM by a Zoom with a focus on police policies, practices and procedures and are asking people to submit questions in advance. So that might actually be really interesting for some of us to, a couple of us to sit in on i- if we have the time. I plan to try to, to sort of see, preview a little bit, even though one of our, one or two of ours will already have taken place. But to preview a little bit what they are hearing as well.
Any other thoughts on the CPRB? And I've talked to a, a member from the CPRB. And so I do know that they are happy for this opportunity. They really are. So.
Yeah, I also know that they've sent out, they're in the process of, or they've already sent out the questionnaires to pri- to previous members and are, are, are putting in ideas from their own members as well.
Great. Improved transparency and accessibility of detailed ICPD budget expenditures?
So Mayor, we do have some additional budget information on the Iowa City Police Department website. And then we'll have a, a kind of a keen eye on this as we develop the fiscal year twenty-two budget as well. And we'll, we'll make sure that we provide expanded materials in the budget document and on the website.
All right. So I, and because at the end of this, hopefully we'll have time to go to the bottom and kind of see where we are on the checklist. I, I'm not sure if anything moves down there or not. For review, inventory of military-grade equipment in the ICPD?
That, the military-grade equipment should be in your information packet on September tenth. The evaluation of federal contracts is in your August twentieth information packet, which you, you have the ability to discuss later today. And then the letter to the Johnson County Sheriff's Office has already been sent to Mayor. So two out of three on that have been provided and one in the works.
Okay. All right, two out of three. And then for enact ICPD general order expressly ban the use of chokeholds and any maneuvering that cuts off oxygen or blood flow.
That general order has been updated. It's been reviewed by the CPRB and is available to view on our website.
So then would that, in, in, I don't, let me see. So as far as like the order itself, would that move towards being finished?
Y- yes, that's a, that's one item that needs to be updated on our next issuance of this report. The, this item will shift over to the green column and will be complete.
Right. All right. And then we have, ah, lose my place. Continue ICPD policy and practice to be consistent with the Iowa House File twenty, twenty-six forty-seven. Ensuring police officers in Iowa have not admitted serious misconduct.
So this is in reference to the, the state reform bill that passed earlier this year. It's already been our practice not to hire officers with serious misconduct. As the the law was passed, the next step is for the state to draft rules, how they're going to administer this law. When those rules come out, we will certainly make sure that we are compliant with, with them. And that, that includes both how we hire new officers. But if officers leave our employment because of misconduct, you know, ensuring that we have the systems in place to, to properly report those to the state so that other departments do not hire that individual.
So we're, we're almost there.
Correct. The, really, there, there's nothing we can do to speed up this process right now. The rulemaking process at the state has to take place. And then we'll, we may have to adjust some of our internal human resources policies just to make sure that we're consistent. But until those rules are done at the state level, there's nothing we can do to get that over to the green column.
All right. So compliance and evaluate, investigate compliance and evaluate disciplinary action related to proper use of body cameras and vehicle recording devices.
So this general, is, this is the third general order that will update as a part of this resolution. And this one is scheduled to be on the next Community Police Review Board meeting, and that is September third. So that's Thursday of this week. It'll be on the CPRB agenda. And then per your request or your direction with this resolution, you will also see this one. So this, this then will go from CPRB to city council before it's fully adopted by the department.
Okay.
The next one is the duty to intervene and stop excessive force that has already been completed. Now, you can view that general order on our website as well. And if you were to click, if you pull up this report, these are all hyperlinked. And so you can kind of drill down and, and get links to those. Prohibit use of tear gas, rubber bullets and flashbangs against peaceful protesters. We anticipate an update to a general order. We're going to wait for the independent review to be to complete on, on that one, because that independent review may guide discussions on how best to update our policies. So that one is still pending and will be taken up after the after that independent review. If you go forward with it, if you decide not to go forward with that, then we'll have to make our own changes and discuss those changes with the CPRB and with, with you. The legislative priorities, the council typically adopts those in November, December. So our office will be drafting reform priorities for you to consider. We'll ask that you adopt those. And then we plan to host a meeting with our state delegation to discuss those prior to the commencement of the legislative session.
Great.
The Truth and Reconciliation Commission is, is on your agenda for further discussion tonight. The one million dollars is identified in the budget and that will just await your direction on how that is allocated. The if I'm going too fast or you want to discuss, please stop at the artistic expression. You had the recommendation from the Public Art Advisory Committee on your last agenda, I believe. So that is a work in progress. We have not initiated and would like to have some discussions with council on artistic expression beyond the mural. So we've talked about festivals or other engagement opportunities. And we'd just like to get that get that discussion with you before we set forth any plans. Juneteenth is an official city holiday. I've initiated discussions with our three bargaining units. Holidays are bargained in our union contracts and thus it will take a, an agreement with those unions to be able to accomplish this. I'm confident we'll get there, but we have not completed that yet. The report on the diversity of our city workforce, as well as what we have done in past years to expand equitable recruiting efforts and to offer training to our employees, that is in your information packet on eight twenty. I hope you had a chance to read that. You'll have an opportunity to discuss that tonight if you'd like. There's also recommendations in there about how we might continue that effort going forward. And then finally, the toolkit. We continue to employ that toolkit. I believe we have a, a public hearing on tonight's agenda that will give you a preview of one application of that toolkit related to our water fees. And then the training to the community has begun. And we also, we've, we've done one community training focused on the business community. On September ninth, we have an additional community training opportunity that's targeted towards landlords and property owners, but is also available for the, for the general community as well. So those, those efforts are being coordinated by our Human Rights Office and will continue certainly through this year and next.
Okay.
So this is the snapshot on, on kind of where, where things stand right now. With the exception that this item here, which is the general order on chokeholds, is, is now in, in the completed column. So you see some of these that are both completed and underway. That's just recognizing that there were multiple objectives in that, in that item. So for example, the military-grade equipment is still under review. But you have sent the MRAP letter and you now have the federal contract information in front of you. So there are some, some kind of partially completed indicators there. The only two that we've listed as, as waiting council action would be the allocation of the million dollars, which I trust will, will come as you get deeper into some of the the other items here. And then this artistic opportunities for artistic expression again, beyond the mural, we just have, like to have a short conversation with you about some of your thoughts before we really engage some of the, the arts community on how to move forward on that.
All right. Counsel, thoughts?
I'll jump in, Mayor, if that's okay. Um, I just, first of all, thank you for the overview and pulling this all together in one list. I think that's incredibly helpful for, you know, we're looking at this all the time and, and seeing the updates, you know, in our information packets. And I think it's really good for us to do that also as a group and to look at it. A couple of things that, that jumped out to me, being able to review, it was in our, as Jeff mentioned, the August twentieth information packet IP three, the report on employee demographics and diversity. And I just wanted to, to raise something we've mentioned before, but maybe haven't picked back up, which is training for city council and opportunities for that. I know, I think John Thomas and I participated in, in one that was put on by Lauren Gray. I don't recall even when that was, that was directed towards, towards city staff and other, I think mostly government employees. But if there's something that we could do as a group, I know that the city council previously had engaged GARE or the Government Association of Racial Equity for some really concerted training and discussion. I just wanted to, to bring that back up and see if there's an appetite among the group for that.
Funny, you should mention that. We do have an opportunity. We just haven't, I haven't pushed that out to you yet, but there is a a GARE-related training that Stephanie Bowers made me aware of today coming up in November. And I, I plan just to review kind of the agenda for that. And, and if it, it looks like it fits well for elected officials, we'll connect you to that opportunity. And then I believe I've mentioned to you that as city staff, right now, we are pushing to our employees a twenty-one day equity challenge that is being run through East Central Iowa United Way. And that, that challenge is designed by Dr. Eddie Moore, who's done some city training with us before. And this is really just a, a phenomenal resource for us. That's certainly a training that, that, that the city council can participate in. That's kind of on your own. It's not necessarily a gather together type of training. But you make that commitment yourself and you go about it at your pace over the course of those twenty-one days. So if you'd like that information, I'd be happy to, to share it again with you. And we'll continue to provide those opportunities to you as well. But I, I do concur that having something you can all attend, and then maybe after that, you know, at a work session or public meeting, discuss what your, what your takeaways are and how those might influence your deliberations and decisions going forward would be, would be pretty impactful.
Okay.
Thanks for raising that.
Great. Well, seem like we are moving along, not as fast as we certainly hope. But definitely being very intentional at, right now reviewing and trying to get to the next steps. Because we are committed, at least myself, and I know I've talked to the counselors. We are committed to these seventeen points in, in the Black Lives Matter and systemic racism resolution that was created. So thanks to the counselors for all of your work that you've been doing. And thanks to the city staff. And even everyone in the community that's been a part of recommendations and letting your voice be heard on these matters and it, and, and so that we can move forward together as a community. Is, thank you. All right. And we move on to the next item on our agenda. Which is going to be clarify, clarification of agenda items. And this is from the formal agenda.
I have a couple of things that come, came out of the correspondence that I wanted to ask about. One had to do with the situation downtown. I think the downtown harassment may have been, in my notes anyway, how it was described. And I don't, I don't know if Jeff, if you could, there's some question as to the the, the manner of police presence in the downtown.
The the manner of police presence in the downtown. That and I'm not clear where this where this ended up, it sounded like there were differences of opinion on this, but. Whether we have someone who's kind of dedicated to the downtown and the way that say David Schwent was at at one point. There were some concerns about the, from what I've heard, the the time lapse from. An incident beginning and when a police presence was actually. There on the scene to respond to that incident. So I just wanted to ask about that. And so maybe I'll just mention the other as well. Bob Opelger's correspondence related to the bike advocacy advocacy commission or committee. I I do hope we can, my my hope in reading this exchange between Bob and and. And block Kent. Regarding how to move forward on these. This question of the structure for advising staff. And also just engaging on the question of advancing our bike. Culture. My hope was that there might be an opportunity for staff to meet with Bob, members of this, the current. Bicycle Advisory Committee and others as necessary to try to, you know, go through what Bob was suggesting. To see if we can't do a better job of addressing all the aspects of the advancing our bike culture. Which seemed, if I understood it, it seemed like the the engagement was primarily on a project driven basis. You know, with with when we were proposing bike lanes and things of that sort and Bob was suggesting it could be an expanded role. But my hope is that that might, we might have that meeting to just see how we want to move forward. More productively with one of the stated goals reaching the gold status, which. I was noting with Pauline the other day that. That was something that we brought up probably four and a half years ago as as our hopes to achieve that and we're still not quite there, so. If if making any changes to the advocacy for our bike culture. Would help us achieve that as well as just on the ground promote culture in Iowa City for biking. Perhaps having that conversation be useful.
I like, John, I also had concerns at correspondence, I think that was eight C about the downtown, so I think. Because I'd gotten phone calls about these issues too, about what was going on downtown with certain individuals and. So I I think we just kind of needed a clarification about the status of of a downtown liaison officer, if that still exists or where we are with that.
For whatever reason, your mic is really fuzzy. Or is it just my speaker?
No, the audio is terrible.
It was. Well, he wasn't totally robotic, that's typically what happens.
Okay, I'm gonna pretend to be Ashley for a moment.
All right.
On the downtown issue, we do, we do still have a downtown liaison officer, Officer Fowler continues to do that work with us. However, we're probably, I think, four or five police officer positions down right now from our budgeted amount. And that means that those officers on specialty positions are often called to regular patrol calls. It's it's very common, no matter if you're on days, evenings or nights, that you're going to go call to call to call. And when we don't have full staff, we can't dedicate as much time to those. Those specialty. Assignments like the downtown patrol, so that's one of the things that we're struggling with right now. We did hear these complaints, we did make sure that Officer Fowler and others could. Respond as they do with with compassion and and eye towards. Connecting individuals with with services they need and I think we've received some some good comments from the the business community to to. To say thank you for for that assistance, but I imagine that's something that we'll continue to struggle with as long as we stay down. Those police officer positions regarding the bike advocacy. The 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 goal for gold is still very much. Our target and well within reach, the nature of that program is that you only apply, I think, every three years or so. That's why that goal has been hanging out there, we applied immediately after council established that goal probably three or four years ago. And fell just short of that with the the biggest knock on us being that we don't have enough on street bike facilities. We feel that after all the additions of bike lanes that the that the council has authorized. In the last few years that we'll have a really good shot of getting gold and I believe that application is in progress right now, I'd have to verify that with with Kent and his team, but. That's that's underway, you saw Kent's response to to Mr. Opelger's request there and I happy to follow up with with Kent, but. We feel like we are executing on that master plan as it was designed and. And we feel like we we have good input, can always be better and and perhaps a restructuring makes sense, but. We'd certainly want to get the impact of or get the input of 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 the other advocates that have been helping us. Make those decisions.
Thank you, Jeff, I had a question about item six F. That was with the Willow Creek Park completion, can somebody clarify what happens again when a company goes beyond the. Expected project completion date, I mean, I understand that there were a lot of extenuating circumstances with this project. But it was delayed for a really long time and I might have misunderstood, but I thought there was something about instead of a fine or a penalty. An amount was just deducted from the final payment, so is that reflected in those figures that we got on this item, do you know?
I'm not sure if I see Ron is on the call, Ron, if you have any information, if we had liquidated damages on the Willow Creek project.
Yeah, I I don't know if we if if we have liquidated damages on that project or not, we'll double check that before the council meeting and we'll have that. Information for for you at the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the agenda?
I was just looking for a little bit of clarification on seven A, which is the water collection ordinance to. Explain a little bit the background of that and I mean, I saw the numbers in there and how it brings it down, it's just the. For some reason, it confused me some.
Sure, Dennis, you want to handle that one?
I can I can translate that question for you and. This goes back to the racial equity and toolkit that the finance department did several years ago and. We took a look at the impact of the water collection process on. Minority community and we did a through our GS system and analysis of where those past two accounts were taking place across the city. And we found that it was really disproportionately impacting the south central portion of the community. And so at that time. We found that the low income program, the discount program was very effective. And we decided to put more resources into that program at that time. Since then, and and that's been working and and we have been getting higher participation. But we went back and took another look at that program and what we were doing. And at that, at the initial time, we were a little reluctant to eliminate the carding fee or. You know, all the fees associated with that collection process. But after looking at that again, we decided that perhaps that was the better way to go. And eliminate that carding fee and then in lieu of that, try to do more things electronically. Like send text message notices and email notices to people and. And because we really felt that fee was rather high fee comparatively to the other communities and it was really. Primarily impacting those residents in the south central portion of the community that. Really ultimately, the better way to go was to eliminate that fee. And then alter our collection process a little bit, so really that's what this ordinance does is, so it just authorizes. The reduction or the elimination of that forty five dollar carding fee. It does increase the initial late fee a little bit. And that's because we're in the process of purchasing software that will allow us to send email, text message and other electronic notices. So there isn't additional cost associated with that particular program, however, when you when you do the math. It turns out that in rather than that forty five dollar fee, they might pay an extra four dollar and fifty cent late fee. So, you know, there's ultimately a much lower cost or. Lower charges on that collection fee that is is levered on those past due accounts. And we're hoping that one, that this might help people from getting their water shut off or helping them to to pay those bills once they get behind. But also then. Allowing us more ways to communicate those late bills to people other than just somebody. Driving up and putting a notice on their door. And so that's kind of, you know, the background of that and and ultimately, it's going to be a much lower cost for those individuals that are that are behind on their water bills.
And and just a point of clarification, this is assuming normal times, we are still not shutting off water during the COVID period. So we're actually looking ahead to when we resume normal collections.
Thanks very much.
Any other agenda items from the formal agenda?
Is that on the consent agenda, the one, the water item, but I'm sorry, I I wasn't like looking at them.
Yep, it's on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I don't want to talk about that also, because you know, I I just believe that to begin with. As long as we are using, you know, employees of the city to go and shut down the water. Why are we charging people forty five even before it's shut, I understand that you are working on to take out that, am I in the right? The right item or I'm off, okay?
You're on the right item.
Okay, I you know, I'm I'm just thinking that, I know that you are now working on waving the forty five, I agree. But you are increasing the fee due to that, like you are saying, oh, we are waving the forty five because to begin with is not. Like, yeah, we saw it is not okay, but instead, we're going to increase the 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 fee so we can. You know, just like. What my point is, just to begin with, you sending somebody from the city to go and do that and put that notice on the door. And you charge the people forty five dollars, that's by itself, it was wrong. I know that you are changing it, but you don't need to increase the fee, you just correct association that was to begin with is wrong. We're using the tag, the people who go there and put this, you know, who go there and shut down the water. The people who go there and put the notice are a city employee and we pay them a salary. We are not giving them more money because they we're sending them out and also the other thing is like. It makes sense to me during the weekend because you have to turn on the water for those people. It makes us completely to charge that person extra if they request their water to be back on the weekend. But on weekdays, why we do that if we using a city employees and my question to you, Dennis, do we pay? Extra money for those people who go and put down notice, do we pay extra fee? For those people who go and shut down the water or turn it back on or anything?
We do not pay them extra unless it's on overtime, there is a cost associated because anytime we would send out an employee to. Card a property or shut up a water, they're doing that in lieu of doing something else like replacing somebody's broken water meter. Or going out and reading meters or doing some other form of repairs, so there is a cost because. It does take time for those individuals and and individuals that are doing these activities are funded from the water system, which is a. Self-funded business operation, so it's it's not being funded from property taxes or other. Other forms of of revenue, so the revenue that is generated by the water fees pays those employees that go out and doing this work. So although there is no really additional cost, there is a cost associated to have the additional additional time on staff to be able to do that work.
No, but if if nobody, if nobody have this problem and everybody pay their fee on time. We still pay the same salary to those individuals who do this work. You know, I I really just don't understand that why we card the people, I understand that we can just do it if. You you do it over times, you are you giving people overtime to do that after hours. And also, if you're doing it in the weekend, I understand that you can also use a fee to the person in in their bills. But yes, if you're doing it during the day and you're doing it, why we do that?
I guess, are you talking about the forty five dollar carding fee? And that's the fee that we're eliminating.
Okay, but what you adding?
Well, there's a, there's a light fee, like, so when you do not pay your bill on time, right now, it's a five percent late charge. And so the average bill is about ninety five dollars and so the average late charge on that bill is about four and a half dollars.
But why you are increasing it?
And we're raising that essentially to a ten percent fee, which will go from four dollars and fifty cents to nine dollars. And that's because we're purchasing software that will allow us to notify people of their late bills and late fees. Through email, text and other forms of electronic communication and move having to to do it manually through labor, which we were charging forty five dollars for.
Do you know who the people who really get this late fees and as your water always shut down is the low income people. Who are not even checking their emails most of the time because they don't have time for that. I I guess you are putting a lot of burden on those people, you don't even need, to me, you don't even need to buy the software if you decide. Not to charge the people like fee, so I I really don't know, but I I think this is wrong. And it has to be corrected and also like turning on the water if somebody came. If you are charging them late fee, also you you charge them ten on fee?
There is a fee to restore the water, so if somebody's water is shut off, there is a forty five dollar fee, actually forty seven dollars and twenty five cents. We're reducing that to forty five dollars to have an employee come out because they have to physically turn the water off. And then come back and physically turn the water back on, so it takes roughly two hours of staff time and equipment time. To to shut the water off and shut it back on, so there is a cost associated with that actual behavior.
During the, during the normal hours, you are not paying them extra. That's my whole point.
Their salary or they are paid hourly, they are union employees. The amount of staff time of what it would take with or without those activities, I guess that would have to be evaluated. How much their time is is required to handle those accounts that require shutting off and carding.
That means we're charging them forty five, we're still charging them forty five dollar if we turn on the water. And we adding to the late fee because we're going to purchase this software that would remind them. And most of the people are not going to see this reminder, who are, you know, maybe the people who really pay their bill on time and they have. You know. They have access to pay their their billing time because they always do that, they have good job. Those people who are still going to see the reminder if you send it to them, but not the low income people. And and I just think that buying this equipment, you're beating and and adding more late fee, you're beating a lot. Of burden on the low income people and you're still charging them if they come and say, okay, I'm paying it. Even though I'm paying fee for late fee, you are still charging me forty five dollars to return my water back. This is ridiculous.
May I make a suggestion, Mayor? Tonight, you're being asked to set the public hearing on this, so you're not, you're not taking a vote on the ordinance tonight. And I don't have the agenda in front of me, but that's my recollection. Dennis, is that correct?
Yeah, tonight is just setting the hearing, actually, September 15th. Your meeting will be the actual hearing itself.
So we can go through this. I mean, I I think what's, what we're arguing here, what we're what we're hearing is a a degree to which we want to lower the fees. Because staff is coming to you saying, let's lower the fees to reduce the burden. And what I'm hearing from Counselor Sully is, let's lower that even more. And so we can have that degree of, you know, how far do we want to move with this? And and staff, this has been an informative conversation. And staff can kind of walk you through these various elements. But I I think that's probably important to do at the public hearing. And tonight, you're just setting that public hearing. You're not voting on this item.
Still, I just want to say my two cents.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
We we will reconvene our work session after the formal agenda. And so for now, I'm going to bring this meeting to a close and we'll see you back. All right, we are going back to our work session, which started yesterday, the first of September at 5:00 PM. And so we have finished our clarification of agenda items. Wanted to just allow any opportunity for any information packets August 20th.
First, a quick comment on IP3, the the staff demographics, recruiting and training. There's, I think there's an awful lot of training going on that people aren't aware of. It's a long, long list. So I think really good information from the, from staff.
And that item, I'd love to see the fire department do more. It seems like everyone was doing a lot.
Any other items? Okay, we're going to go to IP 827. Hearing none there. Well, I think we can probably consider ourselves adjourned, unless there's something else people want to bring up right now.
Um, Mayor, I'm sorry, one, one quick update from the City of Literature Board, because we talked about it at our last meeting, the possibility of redaming a park in honor of James Allen McPherson. I've gotten a couple of comments, one of which may have gone to all of council as well, about the possibility of maybe a more significant space than the very small green space that was being considered. So I just wanted to bring that forward. And I certainly agree with that, that sentiment. And then I maybe should have said it during regular council updates, but I just wanted to take five seconds and say, I'm really, really proud of us. I know we've let down a lot of people in the community on a lot of different things in the last few months, but I see all of your hearts. I know we're trying. I know we're going to continue to try. We're not going to walk away from any of the really, really, really hard stuff that we're dealing with. So I just want to say thanks for this opportunity to be your colleague because I think we're, we're doing all right.
Great.
And and I apologize for adding to this, but I wanted to make one note about item 6 in the August 27th packet. It's amazing what we're able to do with the CBDG funds and 3,000 of our own funds to fund all these requests. There were $260,000 in requests for homeless prevention, childcare, mental health, food assistance that are all under the CARES Act that are all caused by COVID. So the the fact that we ended up with the funds to do that is, is, is a real positive. And I just wanted to note that.
Anything else? All right. We're adjourned. Long night.
Night.
Yes, all right, bye.
Night.
A good morning.
Good morning.